Please stand and join us for the Fledgling Ouija. Larry, the Honors.
Let's be ready to testify that this is the Ouija stand. One nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be advised that this open meeting is being broadcast live and recorded by WRPS for playback on Comcast Channel 14 and Verizon Channel 31. It will also be available for online video on-demand viewing at wrpsrockland.com within 24 hours of its conclusion, as are other recently-recorded meetings and community events. Please go to wrpsrockland.com for further information. Okay, first on the agenda, community announcements. Any?
No.
Nothing? Okay. All right, next on the agenda, open session minutes from October 1st, 2019.
Make a motion to approve the open session minutes of October 1st, 2019.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's a vote. Okay, executive session minutes of October 1st, 2019.
I'll approve.
Second.
And not to be released until the man does a settlement.
We don't need to do that, do we?
Do we?
It's approval only, so you have to say for approval only.
Yeah.
There's no reason to hold that one back, I don't think.
Mike, any further discussion?
No.
You're good?
Not to release.
Not to release.
Approval only.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, oh yeah, sorry. Well, approve not to be released. I'm sorry, misunderstood.
Second.
Not to be released.
So I got a motion.
Approval based on what Doug says.
Whatever, yeah. I got a motion and a second. All those in favor.
That's her first time. He's got a dump pass.
All those in favor, thank you. Moving on. All right, new business. One-day liquor license for Rockland Memorial Library Foundation, 20 Belmont Street, for December 12th, 2019. Anybody here? Come on up. Come up, Karen.
So it's good event.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Rockland residents. My name is Karen Hafner. I am the president of the Rockland Memorial Library Foundation, also known as the Friends of the Library, where a membership group, we, in a typical year, we do 25 events, like poetry readings, speakers, book and bake, at receptions, raffle, Rockland Day, the Situit Band Concert, the Stroll. And in addition to those events, we also fund the museum passes and we fund summer reading and typically fund some kids' programs during the school vacations and other requests that come up. We do this because we're a membership group and also because our members and friends support our fundraisers. In fact, we have an event coming up this Monday with Gothic Ghost Tales by actress and role-player Rita Parisi. So this is going to be great, 6:30 in the upper level of the library on Monday. So, once a year, we have a Thank You event. It's our wine and hors d'oeuvre event for people who have supported us and town notables happens once a year and we do it with liquor license with your approval.
You did a great job, Karen, and the whole organization does, and I would make an approve the one-day license.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just one question, Mr. Chairman. On the question about the foundation having an insurance policy, you do have one, correct?
Yes, we have the, we have it all lined up and signed for.
That's my only question.
Yep.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? That's unanimous. Thanks, Karen. Good luck.
Very much.
Good luck.
Thanks.
All right, next on the agenda, subordination request for a community development block grant, FY16 case R214. Wayne?
Wayne Darra, Community Opportunities Group, the town's grant consultant. Before you this evening is a subordination request we received from a past participant in the housing rehab program. This individual was assisted through the FY16 grant, which we recently closed. They are currently without any mortgage on their property. They have a small equity line of credit. This individual owes some back taxes to the town that they would like to settle up. They're seeking permission from the town to obtain a $50,000 line of credit against their property and the bank is requiring her to have a subordinate, our lien, of $22,120 to that line of credit. Clearly, there would be plenty of equity left in this property to protect the town's interest and this lien is going to continue to run for approximately another 13 years. So, I think it's a reasonable request. It's giving this individual a chance to pay the town some back taxes, which is always a good thing, and there's plenty of security there to protect the town's interest. So I'm asking that the board move to approve that subordination request.
Move.
I got a motion, second? I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. And you've also got one for a subordination request, the case.
Okay, we did have a second one that came in recently. This was a participant in the commercial rehab program. The business would like to refinance their existing mortgage and take a little money out of the property to do additional improvements at the building on their own dime. It's always a good thing. It's a thriving business in the downtown, an employer of people locally. Again, they've got plenty of equity in this property, even with the new loan. The town's interest, it's $33,000 loan that was given through the commercial rehab program, would be clearly protected by the equity left in the property. So, I'd like you to consider approving a subordination of that lien also.
Make a motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? That's unanimous. Thanks, Wayne.
Thank you so much.
Great job, kid.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, appointment approvals. Community Preservation Committee, Steve O'Donnell. Steve, come on up for a second.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Long time no see.
Yeah.
Steve, why the Community Preservation Committee?
I moved back to Rockland after being resident up until I was 19, moved back a couple of years ago, and with the intention of, you know, coming back and giving back to the town. I know Pete Ull pretty well, and talking to him, he said there was a vacancy, and talking to him, he thought it might, I mean, be a good fit for me. You know, get my first foot into town politics, you know, the once-a-month meeting, you know, seemed appropriate.
Now, if you are appointed, you know that it's not just going to end up being this one thing, right?
For sure. It's a three-year term, I'm aware of that. And reading through, I think it's, you know, I voted in support of the CPA when it was brought up here. I think it's a great program, you know, the two small projects that have gone through and been approved, the tramp house and the field fire pump, are great. I think there's a lot of opportunity for projects for the town of Rockland that really we didn't have the funds to do before. I think it's an opportunity for us to move forward on those projects.
It's, glad to see you stepping up. You know, it's great, we're seeing more and more. First time it's coming on board in young people, so it's very, very encouraging.
Thanks.
So, no, and I agree too. Oh, for the record, Steve's older than me, but.
That's okay.
He's aging well, yet not.
Yeah, that's true. But, I mean, for the continued success, you know, serious, for the continued success of the community preservation committee, Steve, like you know the town, you know the projects, you know the issues, like I think, like we all understand what all issues and areas really need attention, they haven't had attention, so I think it's great and I wish you luck.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for getting involved, and too.
Glad that you are involved. For the record, he lives two houses. He did live two houses from me growing up and hanging around with all the kids in the neighborhood.
I did.
It's another fine Rockland citizen who is willing to pay back, and that's a good thing. We need new people all the time. I'm always pushing for new people to be involved because the future is new people. There's plenty of us old guys around that can tell you about the old days and everything else, but you know what? The old days is just the old days. It's the new days in front of us that we should be worried about and concerned about. And having young people and getting involved is a big thing for the town. So, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
All right, I want to take a motion.
I'd like to make a motion.
I got a motion. I have a second. A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, appreciate it. Steve, thank you.
Congrats.
Thank you, folks, and say hello too.
All right, next on the agenda, Ronald Brunel, Conservation Commission. Come on up, Ronald.
Come on up. Yep. Right over there.
Ronald Brunel, been here about almost 40 years in Rockland. After the conservation, going, that means a long time. They go to conservation, zoning, and the planning board, they go.
Excellent. And you've been at quite a few of ours.
Yeah.
That I usually get for the first half, anyway.
Yeah.
So what made you interested in Conservation Commission?
I always, conservation, what's going on in the town, all that stuff. Because sometimes the planning board has the same time as conservation, the meetings. Try to get back and forth.
Do you have any experience on any other committees, or?
No.
Just finally?
I've been going to all of them.
You've been going to them all, so you figure you can't be enjoying them, right?
Zoning a lot.
Sure. Okay.
Okay.
All right, I want to take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's all good, all right?
Good, new people.
You're in.
I'm in.
You're all set.
You made it.
You better vote to the clerk's office and be sworn in.
Oh, she's good.
Well, she's there now.
She's right there.
She's in the back of the.
We have to wait until we get a letter from you.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay. When you get a letter from us, go to the collection and be sworn in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, next appointment, Scott Margolis, South Shore Recycling Cooperative.
Hey, Scott.
Scott, how are you?
I make a motion to approve Scott Margolis's South Shore Recycling Cooperative.
I'll second that.
You had no questions at all, huh?
Nope.
All right, fair enough.
If you don't mind, I'd like to just take the quick opportunity. Lenny, I want to talk to you later on tomorrow. I'll kind of reach out to you. We'll be starting another form of recycling to help lower our trash cost. People will be receiving in the mail from simple recycling. They're pink recycling bags, basically a large pink trash bag, and it's for all of the clothing, the cloth, that kind of stuff. There's a letter that goes out with it explaining exactly what can go in there, but it's things like, you know, socks, underwear, ratty t-shirts, that kind of stuff. Things you don't want to bring to Big Brother, Big Sister, or the other recycling bins in town that go towards secondhand clothes. They take it, they recycle it, reuse it, shred it, and the best part is, it's less going into our trash. So, the more people.
Reduce tonnage.
Use it. We're reducing tonnage, and as we know, the cost of recycling and the cost of trash is just going up, unfortunately, so.
So then, so the households will actually get a letter and a bag?
Yep, they'll be getting, I don't have a sample in front of me. I had one, but I'm actually using it right now in my house. But it'll be a nice little, well, it'll come in as a mailer. It'll have like a large postcard on there with, full of instructions, and it will.
How to replenish it once you use it and that type of stuff?
You use it, you get a new one.
And basically, it goes right next to your trash barrel.
Okay.
And they will be following the trash truck around, well, the recycling truck, one of the two, and will be picking it up.
Okay.
So it's no cost to the town. We actually get a few dollars on the ton, you know, back, but.
Is it just, there'll be a list of what can go in there, right?
Full list explaining everything.
Beautiful.
Sounds good.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Yeah, let's bring her up. Let's bring her up.
Yeah, gotta come up.
Del Shon Flip, come on down.
Gotta come up.
Well, I thought you were going to talk about the pink bags, but Scott beat you to it, so.
I already did it 10 months ago. It's just. Hi.
Hello.
Sorry, it's you.
Kelly, you're interested in the appointment to the South Shore Recycling Cooperative, why?
So, I'm the only one that goes from Rockland, so I was making motions at the meeting and they realized that I wasn't on the board, so it would help.
You're supposed to say that on camera.
Oh.
I'll make a motion.
Jeez, big mom.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
All right. Did I tell you about the pink bag program that we have?
No, we didn't.
So, so October 28th, they're going to be launching, everybody's going to get a pink bag. I'm just kidding. I just.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly.
All right, next on the agenda, school building projects, ballot question approval. Jane, are you coming up to this? You're going to speak to it?
Yeah, we can.
All right.
It's fine. So there's been a lot of work going back and forth between Rich Penny, the school department, the consultants, and town council, the MSBA, bond council, et cetera, and what you have in front of you is the final language for the ballot question, so it's.
After about four or five lawyers that have looked at it.
Yep, many lawyers and from all the different perspectives. It has to meet, you know, regular mass general law requirements, special requirements with bond council, MSBA, et cetera. So what's in your packet is the final language approved by everyone, which is presented for you to approve, so we can get it to the clerk to get it printed on the ballots.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's unanimous.
And then, the next page after that is really more for disinformational purposes. That's just a copy of the legal notice that Sue prepared, which will be published in the paper at least 14 days before the town meeting. So we just put that in there just for informational purposes.
All right.
And then, can I go right into the next item?
Next on the agenda, special town meeting warrant approval.
So, we actually have three items that we feel need to be on the warrant. There's the school building project, which we've been talking about for a while. There's a new, and then there's two new items. One is a correction to how the budget was voted at the last annual town meeting, and then, which is a housekeeping item essentially. And then the third item is authorization for the school department to pursue some federal reimbursement. So maybe what would make the most sense would be just to talk about each of the articles as presented, and then maybe after that, we could talk a little bit about how you'd want to set the order of the articles in the warrant, because I did have a recommendation I wanted to give you. So just not worrying about the order of the articles right now, just the way it's presented for you. I thought it might make the most sense to have Biz come up and explain the budget correction, because she can speak to it more intelligently than I can.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Elizabeth Seleski, Town Accountant. For your meeting that you're doing on December 2nd, the first article has to do with budgets and how it was added up in the meeting, and this was brought to my attention from Donna Shortall, your town clerk, as she was preparing for your annual report, that the town meeting did not add up for the departments, because you vote by the department versus a total value. So the total value in the budget book was $70,708,71, I believe. So once all the departments were added up, it comes to $66,541,92. There is no extra money out there or anything, if that's what, you know, may be in question. What it is, is your state assessments that come off your cherry sheet, they were in the total but not on the book. So when you got your special, your town meeting book, it wasn't there. Also, there's raise and appropriate that typically goes on your recap, which contained snow and ice, which is typical. You raised an appropriate about $150,000, and there were a couple other little things that totaled up to $900,000. So it's basically just housekeeping. Those were tax total 45, overlay 350, and cherry sheet offsets 507. So, housekeeping and, you know, for the year that you had, the budgeting time you had, the town meeting that you had, I think everything went very well. And this is just housekeeping so that we can move forward with our recap and make sure we're added up properly, so that when Donna prints the annual reports, what she's printing will match what was voted.
Okay.
Need to approve? Well, I think, I think we want to wait until we'll approve everything all at once. All right, because we'll approve the order at the same time. It's up to you. I think that's the easiest way to do it. Okay, that's fine. Thank you, Liz. Appreciate it. Before Biz leaves, if you want, also, she prepared like what the statement of the emergency would be for this particular article, because as you know, the charter requires that. And essentially, in this instance, it's to allow us to prepare the tax recap to ensure that the annual town report is consistent with the votes from the May town meeting. Because if we wait until the next annual town meeting, it'll be too late. So that's the nature of the emergency, which if you would vote that motion, that would make that formal declaration.
I'd just like to, you told us that the town of Rockland is kind of unique in the fact that we have to have a finite reason to have a special town.
Emergency, yeah. In my opinion, it is unique to have, to require any article for any special town meeting to have to be of an emergency nature. It's unique, and it's not been my experience, and it kind of ties your hands, because there might be, just for matters of convenience, things you might want to do at a special, but by the strict letter of the law and the charter, you wouldn't be allowed to, because it's only for emergency. And what we're presenting tonight, you know, legitimately are, so that's not in question. Sometimes, just again, as a matter of convenience, you might want to do things at a special, so that would be my.
That's a child change, right?
Yeah, that's just what I was going to say. That would be one of my recommendations.
Which is what we're just getting underway to.
Yeah. Beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Biz.
And, so the school, the school building project, you know what that's about. You've already done the emergency declaration. The language that you have is the final warrant language, again, similar to the ballot, town council, working with the MSBA, working with everyone involved. You know, it's been hashed and rehashed several times. It's very detailed, but this is the level of detail that needs to be in the article. So I'm presuming you don't have any questions, but.
And it's been, it's been approved by?
Everyone.
Everyone, yeah.
And then the, and again, you've already voted that emergency declaration. And then I did ask Jane Hackett to attend tonight, and she's here, and I think she'll pop, I think she'll come up now. She brought some new information to our attention, whereas this article would authorize the schools to enter into an MOU and be eligible for more federal reimbursement, and time is of the essence, and I'll let her explain it further.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board of selectmen. Happy to be here, my first appearance for you tonight. So this is a program under ESA Every Student Succeeds Act, and what it is doing, it's a pilot program that I'd like us to be a part of. It is affording municipal, well, school districts and municipalities to be eligible for reimbursement for the transportation of foster care children. So if we sign this MOU prior to March 1st of 2020, we'll be eligible for, to receive 20% of reimbursement, of up to 20% of our third quarter costs, essentially our third and fourth quarter costs, April to June, which would be about $5,000. It may sound like little money, but by doing it prior to March 1st of 2020, it also makes us eligible to receive fiscal year's 20's entire cost, 20% of our entire foster care cost, which at this time, very difficult to predict, because this is one of our wildcard, you know, line items that we treat, need to manage, it just pops up on any given day of the week. So, that's the nature of the emergency. If we don't do it by March 1st of 2020, we lose last year's quarter, but all the eligibility for this year.
Jane, you mentioned foster kids. Does this also include homeless?
No, it's a different program, and we actually have to track it and report it separately.
Okay.
And nothing that can, the same thing on the end of the year report, you have, because with the new education reform that's currently in front of, at the State House, tuition, there'll be reimbursement for sped transportation for the first time. So you can't use Circuit Breaker currently for that. So each segment of our transportation program has to be segmented.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
So, now do we have?
Roughly, how many children in foster care attend Rockland schools?
Today, six.
Right.
So have we come to the language on exactly how it needs to be written?
Yes.
Dobbin, okay.
Thank you.
So, I think we'll go back to Doug now. Thank you, Jane.
Thank you.
To your recommendation on the order of the warrant, and then we'll, if we agree, we'll vote on the other one. Then you'll decide, right? So this may likely be one of the first recommendations I have that you don't agree with, but that's, that's okay, but I feel obligated to tell you what I, what I think is the right, right thing to do. In my experience, what I would do, and what I'm recommending to you, is to have the first article be the correction to the budget. I would have the second article be the school article to authorize the MOU to get the federal reimbursement, and then I'd have the large school building project be number three. One of the main reasons for that is if you put the big school building project number one, that's going to go on for a while. As soon as it's over, the building's going to empty, you might not get a quorum, you might not get our other business done, so, kind of agree? So that, that's my thought.
Doug, I think, I think you're wrong. I think you misjudged us. I think we agree with you.
Well, that, so my last point was going to be, you could close the warrant, but my, my advice is, why don't you wait until November 5th? Because you can wait until the 5th and we'll still have time, you know, to print and advertise, just in case something else comes up. You can open it again, or you could just leave it open until the 5th. That would be my advice.
I know, normally we would have.
So we surprised you.
You did, you surprised me.
So I make a motion then, of to approve each of the, our three articles that have been proposed for a special town meeting on December 2nd, 2019, in the order, in the order as outlined by our town administrator.
Second. I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you. Can I also just ask that you, you vote to approve the statements of emergency for the, those two remaining articles that we just talked about earlier?
I want to take a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All of them in favor? Also unanimous.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, department head update. So one of the things that we've had some discussions about up here as a board is just, you know, the information, the amount of information that goes out to the residents, and a lot of times, you know, the residents get their information from watching, you know, the selectmen's meetings, or a school committee meeting, or what they see on Facebook and other social media sources, and sometimes that's not always entirely accurate. So, you know, I thought it'd be a good opportunity to invite some department heads to each of our meetings to kind of give just a quick update as to what they're doing in their department. You know, obviously, we know as a town that we've gone through a lot over the last year and a half, and I think a lot of times, the reputation of this building has taken, taken taken a hit. And unfortunately, people have painted it with a broad brush. And there's, you know, I think there's a lot of good people up here, they're doing a lot of good work, and it's, I think, our responsibility to help restore the public's faith in, in the people that, that work in the town offices. So without further ado, tonight, we have Donna Shorto and Judy Hartigan. So you guys want to decide who goes first? Donna, it is? There she is. Town Clerk, Donna Shorto.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you, Donna.
Thank you, Donna, and welcome.
Thank you for inviting me. If I'd realized it was an invitation, I probably would have declined, but, okay. I'm very serious, you know, so. I wanted to talk about the appointed in election, which is what I handed out. I color coded it, so you'll know which ones you're responsible for. There are committees that have openings. As you look through, you'll also see, there's notations that some committees were ad hoc committees, and that means that they were created at a selectmen's meeting, but they were never voted. Let's see. All right, if you look at the Open Space and Recreation Plan Committee, page four, that was an ad hoc committee that was voted at a selectmen's meeting in 2017. But in order for it to be continuing, you have to vote it at town meeting. It was never voted at the next town meeting, so I don't know whether it's something you want to think about addressing, whether you want to let it go, because at this point, there are no current members, because it expired by the next town meeting.
I think that was a one-time.
Which is fine, you know, if that's how it's going to be, if you just let me know, I can take it off the books. The senior, next to last page, the Senior Center Building Committee, that was actually voted at a town meeting to be a committee. So where we no longer have need for it, I don't, you know, I don't know whether you want to make a, whether you want to do a house cleaning to get that off the books, or whether it's something that you wanted to keep as a, like a maintenance program, but it is still on the books. We, we have members listed, but they're not current, because they were never, they were never renegotiated or reappointed. So there's some cleanup here. That's all yours. You just let me know how you want me to clean it up. Okay, so that would be the appointed list. And like I say, I color coded it, because some of them are appointed by the moderator, some are appointed by finance committee. So if you look for anything in yellow, those are yours. And it's obviously not something you have to decide tonight, but Doug asked me to put it together, so I did.
I can just jump in also, as we talked about many weeks ago, we've been working with the company onboard to have the online database for all our boards and committees. So Donna's got all the information up to the company, so they're in the process of building the database and the site. So I don't know exactly how many weeks it'll be, but in the near term, instead of having to, to have a spreadsheet like this, there'll be this great real-time database, and you can search for a committee, you can sort it different ways.
Yeah, it would be linked in with our, our website.
It'll all be integrated, yeah, so it's, so I appreciate it.
If someone who came back to town wanted to look for something, they could browse through and see what openings might suit them best.
So, I guess I just have a question for ourselves and for the town administrator. Should we include, actually, all going through this on the agenda for like our next meeting? Or do you want to make a recommendation towards how we can clean it up?
I mean, this started, because the chairman asked for, you know, for a list, because I think you guys were curious, so I think we should all chew over this and, and, you know, think about.
There are some people.
The next thing is see who's, what committees need, need members, what committees are existing that we really don't need anymore. Yeah, gives us an opportunity to kind of clean up some stuff.
And there are some people that we could reach out to, to see if they still want to be on the board, because they weren't, because of the last year and a half. Some things ended up falling between the cracks, and so to see if some of these people want to be reappointed, whether they're still interested, we could, if you, if you approve, we can reach out to them and give them the first chance to reappoint. Or if you want to just hold it as an open seat and see who wants to.
I think I actually kind of like that idea. I mean, somebody may not know that they need to be reappointed at this time, so, so maybe we go with that. I mean, if you guys are willing to do that, you know, reach out to them and, and see if they're still interested in, in reappointment, and if they are, then have them come in, fill out the paperwork, and we'll, we'll reappoint at that point. But I think it's, you know, Donna, this is, this is great. I mean, this is more than I, I thought we were going to get. I was, you know, just really asking for, I figured it'd just be.
You shall receive.
Yeah, I figured it'd just be a couple, you know, spots, but this is really in-depth. I apologize to everybody with us all up here reading.
I will, I will admit, it was at Doug's probing.
Okay. So, so I think we should really take a look at this and see what we can do about this, because, you know, as we start tonight, some people are looking to, to come onboard and join in improving the town, helping out in whatever way they can. And I think if we make this, you know, a priority on the website, you know, you know, a quick link that you can get to, to all these, these spots, then, then I think that'd be a good thing as well. So, so let's do that. Let's really dig into this and see what we can do. That's great. And what else is going on in your department?
I'm still working on census. People don't understand how important census is. As you know, we're always applying for grants. One of the things that helps us is if we have an actual count of the number of people. I just took the count, and I'm showing 17,727 residents, but I know there's way more than that, because I have 456 nonrespondents for this year. That's individual people. Now you add on their families. And I have 655 households that I'm showing as vacant. So if we can get word out however, how important it is that people send in their census, you know, I have people come in and they've, they bring in their census from 2015. Ah, I found this, here you go. Well, that's great, but, I mean, it's wonderful today, but we haven't known that you've been there for four years, and I have people who come in and say, well, I pay my taxes. That's fine, but I don't know whether you're living there, or whether you're renting it out, and whether the people you're renting it out to have 10 kids. So if there's, if you can think of any way possible that we can get out how important census is, because it makes a difference to police, fire, schools, it, it makes a difference to the water sewer. So like I say, 17,000, I'll bet we have at least 2,000 people living in town that we're not accounting for.
Is there an option to fill the census out online?
There is not. I would, I would love it if there was, but unfortunately, that comes from my state system. So I can't, I mean, I, when I send it to them, I always say, please, if, if you don't feel like sending it back, give me a call.
Right.
You know, send me an email. Any way I can get that they will, will update their, I send to all the dog owners. Hi, I got a message that you have a dog, but I don't know that you live there, and I don't think your dog lives there alone, so please, anything I can think of. I know we have a large ethnic population, and I don't know how to reach them. I know a lot of them are afraid to give us information. We don't tie in with those figures at all. I just want to know that you live in the house. I want to know that you have seven people living there. I, to have, to show 655 vacant residents, Border Health gave us a list of ones that they know have been foreclosed on. That's only 10. That doesn't bring down the list a whole lot. So anyway, I send out new, you know, welcome packs to any time somebody changes over a deed, but I'm looking for help. So any, any brilliant ideas that people have that we can reach out to, you know, residents in town and get them to let us know that they're there, because it's going to help all of us.
Right.
Doug, maybe, maybe use Twitter. I mean, I, I know we haven't got a, a ton of followers necessarily, but, you know, we can, we can share it along those lines.
Not that I know of, but I was thinking of going to the pastors in some of the churches and seeing if I can get them to explain to their congregation.
Donna, how about the school? Because they do ELL, night school.
Oh, I hadn't thought of that, the night school classes. That would be good.
Because I know there's 100 and somewhat signed up there.
I have approached them about, you know, if they have a new, new student come in, giving them a census, but I will more forcefully, you know, we kind of talked about it, but it was.
Talked.
But I think that would help too.
Yeah.
But I will take any and all.
That might be a way to reach some, some of, you know, some of that population.
Because we've, we've now sent out a third mailing to some of these households, and they just, they don't want to answer. We used to have, at one point, we had a board of registrars that actually went door-to-door for anybody that didn't respond, but we don't have that anymore, and today, I'm not sure that I want to ask people to go door-to-door. So.
Can you, I know this is probably very unpopular, but can you attach a small fine to it for not sending it back?
There's actually a $500 fine.
Oh, there is?
Yep. The state allows for a $500, and I've sent out the legal letter. I got the legal letter from the lawyers. I sent out with the second mailing. Yeah, there's a $5,000, a $500 fine, and if you answer less than truthfully, there's a $10,000 fine, but we're not going there. Yeah, there is, there is a state okayed fine.
I feel like if you highlighted that fine a little bit more, people might, you know, tend to respond back.
And then wave the paper. You're threatening to, well, if you'd answered me, I wouldn't have threatened you.
Try to help to spread the word.
Not a threat, it's a written promise, that if you fail to act.
Well, it's a notification.
We have to charge you in order for.
That's right.
We have to send somebody down to your house to get the numbers for you.
Did you just volunteer?
I did, yeah, Larry's retired.
I will, if you want me to.
Just some time.
I, I do have time, and I will, I was going to talk to you about it after the meeting, rather than have my wife sit at home going, what did you get yourself into now?
And other than that, it's the special town meeting and special town election, which we already covered very nicely, so that's it for me.
Anybody, any questions for Donna? Awesome, thank you, Donna.
Thank you.
All right, next, Judy Hartigan, Collector's Office.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hey, Judy.
Thank you for having me. I am Judy Hartigan, your Town Collector, and I am here to, I don't have a handout, I apologize. It's impossible to hand out what we do to everybody, it would be volumes. Just to, and stop me at any time if you have a question, you want to interject. We have just completed our successful conversion from MCC onto Invoice Cloud. It was seamless, it was very productive, and the interesting thing, I spoke to you about it, it provides a real-time processing, which enables the bills to be able, to be out there for a longer period of time. When we were not real-time, you had to take the bills down after the demands were due, and they went to the deputy collector. With this real-time processing, it allows us to keep the bills out there longer and the online banking more active. We got tremendous positive feedback on the ability to pay by phone. A lot of it from our millennials that are thrilled that they can pick up the phone and make a payment, and they don't have to do it from their computer online. They usually have their phones with them, and if they're going to pay their bill, the bill is right there. We are currently, because MCC services our real estate and our excise tax, we also have a separate and distinct online banking that services our water, sewer, and trash online. We're revamping that largely due to the fact that it's, it's a fairly archaic system, and I don't know if any of you guys have used it, but you actually have to put in your dollar value and then break it down. We, I have found out that we are in sync with their software, so now what can happen is what's happening on your real estate side. You plug in your bill number, and it's all prefilled. So as long as you have your bill number, it will tell you what you owe for water, sewer, and trash. There's no more putting in what you need to put in. That saves duplicity, saves on a lot of different things of people having to, they go in there and erroneously put in a bad figure. So that, that's going to be a big revamp, I think, to our water, sewer, and trash. Our upcoming taxes, we're busy, they're due November 1, and we are currently working, now that after November 1 is finished, we will be right back into the actual tax period, which means that after the November taxes are completed, we then go into working with the assessors in preparation of the actual tax bills that be, that need to be mailed by 12/31. What that incorporates is us working in sync with not only the assessors, but the water, sewer, and trash departments to put liens on those real estate bills for those accounts that may or may not be delinquent. No, they will be delinquent, so they go on it, the real estate bill. What that is, is it adds the, it comes off of the water, sewer, and trash software program, it comes on to ours, Munis, and it's attached to your real estate bill as a special assessment. So we're in the midst of that. Breath of fresh air has been the fact that we are no longer flying by the seat of our pants alone. Biz, thank you. Doug, thank you. Jen, thank you. It's wonderful to have the support of people that are knowledgeable and understand what you had been through, and are more than willing to get you to where you want to be in a, in a, in a quick and easy fashion. Biz and I have worked closely on accounts receivables for the reconciliation for the upcoming audit. That took a lot of effort on both parts, but it's been a very successful and very positive move toward reconciling. Currently, I've just completed our 2018 tax takings. We advertised 13 properties for a total of $29,000 and some change. That was down from 56 properties that would have been taken. We worked with those people with payment plans and, and was able to reduce that number. Of the 13 properties advertised, we're actually taking 11 for a total of $28,000. So the, the point being is that we've worked really very zealously with the people that owe the taxes, whether putting them on payment plans or working with them to, to chip away at their taxes. Most important thing right now is I'm interviewing for an open position, which is vacated by Robin Boyd, who was my, I'm sorry, Robin Day, who recently accepted a position in the sewer department. She was incredible at the window, she had a fabulous presence, she's going to be missed. But we have, Stacy and I have gotten a few really good lucrative interviews. I'd like to fill the position sooner than later, since we are heading into our fairly significantly busy time. We just upgraded to Munis, which is our software database that we use for the municipal data processing. That has added additional enhancements and processing features that the old system did not allow us to do. We're just finding out now, today, that in doing our municipal lien certificates, this new upgrade not only pulls in your real estate, it also pulls in your personal property. So if you have a personal property bill out there that needs to be shown on your municipal lien certificate, it will show that, where the old, the older system just showed you real estate, which is relatively huge, because we've spoken before about how difficult personal property is to collect. We are also working with the assessors, Munis and the deputy collector, to prepare for the new RMV Atlas system, brand-new transfiguration in the Registry of Motor Vehicles, they went on to a new system. What we're doing now is we're currently in the middle of the test program of testing those functions to ensure that the commitments that come over will come over correctly, will hit Munis, and then we'll get forwarded on to our, our billing. And we were taking, we took on parking violations. It has not been a huge issue, since we're already doing civil citations. I've kind of mirrored what we do for civil citations and kind of adapted the parking violations with the civil citation piece that we collect. Most of that work is done by the Plymouth County Treasurer. It's just a matter of making sure that the books are kept in sync. We have a spreadsheet of what gets paid, and then when the actual tickets come in, they're scanned and sent to the Plymouth County Treasurer. And then the whole process, they will send in the payments, we will update the spreadsheet, much like I do with civil citations, and the whole process is completed. We have had a significant increase in municipal lien certificates due to either refinancing or sales of property in the town. With that, we've had a, we've had a, we've had a tremendous, I'm going to say the increase by about 35%. We are also in the process of, through the audits, the auditor's recommendation, we are doing a complete reconciliation of Data National, which is the water, sewer, and trash website. So what I do on the real estate and excise tax side, which is reconciled monthly for the treasurer. in municipal lien certificates due to either refinancing or sales of property in the town. With that, we've had a tremendous, I'm gonna say the increase by about 35%. We are also in the process of, through the audits, the auditor's recommendation, we are doing a complete reconciliation of Data National, which is the water, sewer, and trash website. So what I do on the real estate and excise tax side, which is reconciled monthly for the Treasurer, we're now introducing that very same thing for water, sewer, and trash, so that we know what commitments come in, what abatements go out, what monies come in through the Collector's Office. So we have a good handle on, we're kind of really evolving into a true town collector, is what we're doing. And in that, where the reconciliation piece is very large in that. Right now, that's it. We're kind of, we're in ebb and flow kind of situation where we have, we have slow times, which is when we get to pick up and finish our recons and do all that, and then all of a sudden we get the tsunami of taxes and then, this is actually our busiest time as we head into year end, because the tax bills, we have a 12/31 deadline that we have to meet for the tax bills to be out in order to meet mass general law regulations, that your tax bills have to be postmarked by 12/31. So we've got a lot of work cut out for us, we've got a lot of different things in the mix. The RMV is what we're working on currently, which is pretty significant because it's, we had to wait for Munis to be upgraded to the 11.3 in order to truly test the Atlas program to see if it would work. So far it has, we've gotten to the point where we can pull in a commitment, but moving forward as to getting it over to the billing vendor is, there's a little bit of a glitch in that right now, nothing that we're not gonna be able to work through. So in a nutshell, that is what the Town Collector has been doing. Any questions from the board?
We don't have any.
You don't understand?
I'm only kidding.
You pay taxes, you understand.
You've been shorthanded for a few weeks.
We've been shorthanded for, yes, Robin left on the 16th, yes, so about a month. But we're handling it nicely. I mean, we've, we have, because that and I are both seasoned, my assistant, it's not something that we're, we've not used to. We know when we need to program and when we need to kick into gear and when it's gonna be, you know, the heavy times. It will be a challenge when the window gets busy. But again, it's not something we can't handle. It's one of those, it's one of those things is, you know, you do what you have to do. And one of the things that is the most significant piece is that the window gets the attendance that it needs and attention that it needs, and that the taxpayers are given the service that they're used to and that they don't feel that there's even a missing person in the link, that as far as they're concerned, one person's on vacation. So I'd like to fill it. It takes, it's a significant role in that it's a very multitask-oriented office in that the window person can sometimes be pulled away in all different kind of directions where you have people at the window, you've got the phones ringing, and you've got also work that has to be processed that's coming in. So it's a challenging position and it's, it'll take, Stacy and I will find the right fit. But right now, we're, that's what we're kind of focusing on right now.
Judy, I think the last time you were here, maybe the time before, we were talking about possible pin pad at the window. Is that not a thing anymore?
The pin pad at the window, I think, is probably going to be put on a back burner for now, because honestly, the phone transactions have taken off.
Picked up so much.
They've taken off. And it's, I think, I think the pin pad with, with the idea of it being outside the window, because it's a protective setting, you have to have it outside the window. The security and the liability is something that I'd like to tread lightly with if we do introduce it. I'd like to let the online banking and the phone play out for about maybe four or five months, and then maybe revisit it in the spring for the pin pad and go from there. But we have, the online banking has increased pretty significantly, which is a good thing.
Very good. Anybody have any other questions?
No.
Comments?
Thank you, Judy.
Thank you very much.
Two quick observations. One, I just wanted to echo what Judy said, that they're a very busy department, and I see it just because of where my office is located, there's just a steady stream of customers, you know, every day, all day, and they do a good job. The other thing I wanted just to highlight, because she went over it kind of quickly, is the fact that water, sewer, trash is on a different financial software system is really problematic, and it's not ideal. And my, I'm not an expert in this, they know way more than me, but my understanding is Munis doesn't really accommodate water, sewer, trash the way we need it in Rockland. So there's no, and the system that water, sewer, trash is using Data National works for those three departments, but the fact that it's a separate system, there's a lot of inefficiencies in there, and it's something that we're kind of brainstorming and trying to find other ways to improve that. So we'll see where we go from there. I just wanted to tip you off that, because she said it kind of quickly, but it really is a problem and it makes things more inefficient, which is not good. So we're working on it.
Yeah, it does. And Munis honestly is a software that's built in to run a municipality. The one, the one problem that we bump up against in bringing water, sewer, and trash over to Munis is the billing process. We just can't seem to get our arms around the triple bill that you're used to that goes out. And then that's something that would need to be addressed if we were to go, if this was gonna be a transition, a fruition. But yes, Doug is absolutely right. Running the tandem systems is a challenge on everybody, for everyone, and it would make sense to bring it under one umbrella. It would make it a lot more streamlined and user-friendly. So yes, that is something very positive that we'd like to move toward.
All right. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it.
Have a good night.
You too.
All right. Next on the agenda is Board of Selectmen Goals, Objectives Follow-Up. So I asked Doug to put this on the agenda, just so that we could kind of set a date, not specifically to get into the goals tonight, but we had talked about sitting down and maybe doing it in a, like a workshop-type setting, where it wouldn't be during a formal meeting, but we might, you know, meet downstairs or something like that, and just kind of discuss it and throw out some of our own ideas and review it, you know, compare it versus the list of, you know, that Doug and Jen had put together, and prioritize their list and whether it's, whether we agree with their list or not, and we make those decisions during this workshop. So anybody, any suggestions on a date and a time when we'd like to try to get together and do this?
Are you going to post?
Yeah, it'd be an open meeting. It wouldn't be a meeting necessarily that I don't think would have to be televised. I think we could just do it downstairs, or we could probably do it downstairs in the Chaffee Room and just kind of discuss it. And if members of, you know, the community, residents want to come out and listen to how we brainstorm our priorities for the town, then they're more than welcome to. But I think it's a better setting for us to really have this discussion, because this is obviously something that we consider extremely important, so.
I think, I think it's the right way to go. Dedicate that time to it so we can, yeah.
So what do you guys think? Any thoughts, you know, obviously before the holidays get going?
The only thing I'll throw out there, I don't know if it works for me, but it may not work for anyone else. There are five Tuesdays this month, and I'm not sure whether the fifth Tuesday, the 29th, could work. It's just it would continue the, actually no, it would continue the other week in this month, but then we would have two back-to-back weeks. But I don't know, that's what, I don't know, just a thought.
Does Tuesdays work for your work schedule?
Yeah.
What's that, Tuesday, 29th?
How's it for you?
Tuesday, 29th works for me.
Doug, Jen?
I'm retired.
Well, and that's another thing, too. Now, Doug, you and Jen didn't even want to be a part of it, you don't have to be. You know, I mean, you can be there obviously to speak towards, you know, your goals and objectives, but you presented them to us already, and, you know, if anybody, you know, missed it, you know, we have a tape. So I don't want to put you guys out by any means or make you guys feel as though you're obligated to be there, you know?
And I mean, whatever you think, if you want us there to answer questions, that's fine. If you don't want us there, that's fine, it's, you know, up to you. But I'm certainly available. And Jen is as well.
I mean, that's just an idea. I mean, as we know, my idea is I'm always the best, so.
Of course, yeah.
Second. Is anybody in agreement with that?
29th.
What time are you thinking?
Jen's saying there's a master plan committee meeting.
What time?
Four.
How long do those usually go for?
Two hours.
That means Rich will be here for a while.
What's that?
That means you'll be here for a while.
Doesn't matter.
Can you start?
You could do seven unless you just don't want to be here that long, Rich.
It's either that or I'm driving to kind of cross-country, so it doesn't really make a difference.
Doesn't matter.
I mean, it works for me, but whatever.
What about like six?
Oh, that's.
You think they'd be done?
We wouldn't need to have, if you, probably have to go the other way.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure, you know, it's gonna be a pretty broad topic, if you will, with, you know, not a lot of specifics, but I'm just a general, what's the most important things to do and how are we gonna do them? Yes, I'm looking at it.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think we can just, you know, springboard off of the list that they provided, and then, you know, if you guys have anything that's not on the list that they gave us, and then we can just prioritize. And it could be that we end up going through it together. I think we'll go one by one, and if we agree with their prioritization of the items, of the goals, then we can stick with it. And if there's, you know, a discussion that has to be had about, you know, reprioritizing some things, then we do that. Okay? All right. So we're thinking October 29th at 6:00 PM in the Chaffee Room downstairs. So we'll just make sure that that's available as well. Okay. Moving on. Next on the agenda, other business not reasonably anticipated. Doug, any?
Not me.
Turn to the other end.
Okay. All right. Town Administrators' Report and Correspondence.
The one thing I forgot to mention when we were going over the warrant and the ballot question was, there was a whole bunch of emails last Friday that Rich, that Rich Penny had with other members of the School Building Committee suggesting that we look at creating an online calculator for residents to be able to punch in their own assessed value of their home, so they could see what the exact estimated tax impact will be for the school project on their individual home, rather than just the average number that we keep talking about. So what I just printed out here is a screenshot from the town website. So Gino, our IT Director, did some fast work and has a new tab on the bottom of the homepage. So if you go onto the town website, scroll down toward the bottom on the right-hand side, you'll see a tab called School Project Calculator, and where it says, "Enter Assessed Property Value." What I have in there right now is the town average, which is $318,194. So you can put in your own home value, and down at the bottom, it'll give you your average yearly cost. And you'll see there's even more detail above it. It'll tell you what the cost is in year one, year two, in the middle years, in the last year, and in total. And the important thing for the public to know is that this assessed property value is not the current market value. It's not what you see on Zillow or anything like that. It's by the formal rules that the assessing department uses, which always lag a couple of years behind. So we have a link up just on the upper left-hand side there, where it says, "Rockland Property Value." So you can click that if you don't know what the technical assessing department value is. You can click that, put in your street address, and it'll tell you what that number is, and you just.
You can actually do it in multiple ways. You can put in the street address, you can actually put in your name, if you actually know your lot number. So there's about eight different ways of getting that number.
That's right. So we put out a Twitter feed on this already, and I just wanted to let you know, and I'm sure other groups will promote it as well. But it was a good idea that others had, and I'm happy that Gino was able to put that out quickly. So I wanted to let you know about that. Then just a couple of other, couple of other things. I attended a lunch at the South Shore Votech School about a week or so ago, and I know you're all very familiar with the school and their program. I wasn't. It was really helpful for me. I met with the superintendent, as well as the town administrators from Whitman, Norwell, Situate, Cohasset, and Hanover. So it was really excellent. You know, we got a great overview of what they do there. And it's clear to me that I think we'll have some opportunities for some small projects here in town using the students. And I know that you've probably done that in the past with other things, but with the whole long list of capital items we're looking at here, I think there'll be some things that we could, we could have them help us with. So we're gonna be following up on that. Related to that, some of the town hall projects that you may have seen earlier today, we're having all the metal railings outside of town hall repaired. That wasn't something that was initially on my first list, but it's become clear to me from walking up and down the steps to the parking lot every day, they're all, they're all rusted and rotted out, and I was really concerned that they're gonna fall down and hurt someone. So if you see a pickup truck with a welder doing some heavy-duty welding up there, that's what that's all about, and that's, we're funding that from the town hall capital projects. We're also moving ahead with some of the library repairs we talked about earlier. The ground floor carpet has been ordered, and installation's gonna happen on the 21st. They've also already started the repairs in the children's room, repairing the wall that was damaged from the water and sewer pipe leaks. So that drywall's been repaired and painting is happening now. We've also done a bunch of smaller electrical and plumbing repairs at the library, also helping some of the water infiltration that's been happening in that children's area where it's gotten moist. And all that leads me to just want to, you know, give a special thanks, a real special shout-out to the building inspector, Tom Ruble. He's been going above and beyond with me, and, you know, he's the last person that would want me to say it on camera, but I really want to say that he's, I mean, he's acting a bit like a facilities director out there with me, and he's caulking some windows and just helping me figure out who are the right people to call and, you know, where are the right ways to look at things. Because it's one thing just to have money and an account, you also need to have a little bit of expertise. So I just, I want to thank Tom, because he's really, really going above and beyond. Same goes with the, you know, the railings out front, et cetera. So moving on, I know I mentioned this to you before, but I'll just publicly announce that we did release the request for qualifications, the RFQ to hire the architect to do the feasibility study for the McKinley School, which was funded at the last annual town meeting. We released that last Wednesday, October 9. Responses are due from firms by November 1, and we've already received requests for the document from over 32 firms thus far. So my gut tells me we're gonna get a, we're gonna get a pretty good response, because clearly this feasibility study is gonna show that there's potentially a very large project, so that, you know, that attracts a lot of interest from these firms. So we have a good team of people that's working on this, and there's actually a briefing, site visit scheduled for tomorrow. We made it optional, but I'm sure we'll get a bunch of firms there, and I'll keep you up to date as that progresses. Next, I also wanted to highlight that, I don't think Deli's here, she left, but our health agent, Delshaun Flip, was able to secure a $10,800 grant from DEP. It's called the Recycling Dividends Program, which I think we've received in the past. It's part of the Green Communities Act. So that's $10,800, and it's gonna really be targeted toward the recycling center and various things that can be used there. So I want to thank her for her efforts to get that grant. Just a couple of other random things. I did attend a Capital Planning Committee meeting, the first one I've attended since I've been here, and that was helpful for me to get an understanding of kind of how the capital process has worked. It's a little bit different in every town, but the committee seems really geared up and organized, and so I look forward to working with them. And related to that, we had an all-department head meeting last week, which we do every month, and one of the focus of that meeting was talking about our budget process, both operating budget as well as capital. Biz and I are working on finalizing the budget request forms. Again, there'll be something separate for operating versus capital that we're gonna send out to all departments to try to kick-start the process. And as Judy talked about with this upgrade to Munis, one of the things Biz and I are working on is to see if we can have this form be done in a way where there will essentially be reducing any redundant data entry, so the information we get can just be imported directly into Munis. And we're gonna really try to use the Munis Budget Module rather than offline spreadsheets that later have to be inputted into the financial software system. So that's our goal. We'll see how that goes. And then lastly, as I think the board knows, we did schedule the first Charter Review Committee meeting, which will be November 4th at 6:30. Just get them started, get them organized, and then they'll be off and running from there. And that's all I have for you tonight.
Awesome. Thanks, Dr. Ishel. All right. Selectmen's comments. Comments and opinions expressed by individual members do not necessarily reflect the views of the Board of Selectmen, and are the opinions and comments of only the individual member. Mr. Mullen.
I just want to help highlight that one week from this evening, October 22nd, the Rockland Rockland Chamber of Commerce will be holding like its Pizza Palooza, which has become an almost, like an almost yearly event now. And, but the event, the Pizza Palooza will be held from 5:00 to 7:00 o'clock in the Rogers Middle School gym. And we already have confirmation from almost, I think, around 10 local pizza shops and some other surprises. And so thanks to the Rockland Chamber for hosting and organizing that effort again. And one of the highlights of the Pizza Palooza this year is the fact that the Rockland Chamber has graciously indicated that the proceeds that it builds from that evening's events will actually be donated to Reimagine Rockland to help fund our initiatives and really to help really solidify our work continuing to go forward. So we've worked extremely well with the Chamber and the South Shore Chamber, and we're just really grateful that, you know, they're willing to, you know, share the resources that they're bringing to help us continue our work forward. So next Tuesday evening, the 22nd, 5:00 to 7:00, in the middle school gym. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Mullen. Ms. Nyman?
I just want to send our thoughts and prayers to the neighboring town of Abington on the tragic loss of the Zaccardi family. I'm sure you all know what happened there last week, but maybe if the board could take a moment of silence in memory of that family.
So noted. Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Ryan. I'm sorry, Mr. Penny.
Want to give a shout-out to the head football coach, Nick LaCory, who was awarded Coach of the Week last week for the football program that is off to a 5-0 start, one of the best starts, or one of the only undefeated starts they've had in a long time. So hats off to them. Also, wanted to really thank Gino, Doug, Deb, John Allard. Yeah, last Friday, I kind of started sending some emails saying this would be a great tool, and hats off to everybody involved to put this together, get the information, and actually have this up and running virtually in less than a day when it was all said and done. It was kind of amazing. So hats off to everyone involved. Really appreciate it.
Mr. Ryan?
I want to thank Rich Penny for the work he's been doing for the school building project. It's like we're doing double duty, you know, not only being a selectman, but he's trying to do the right thing by the school kids in the town. And I want him just to appreciate it and the people to appreciate the work that he's done, I think quite honestly, that all the, all the selectmen have really stepped forward and taken their projects to a new level to the people. And I think it's very important that we bring in new people and continue the work that we're doing. People recognize what we're about, and they still stop me and different people I don't even know thank me for the work we're doing in town, and I tell them I'm not alone, and we get thanked for the response to the opioid crisis the other day, that people thanked us for having the groups that we have that do this work. So I just want the board to know that we're not alone out there. Everybody, the majority of the town people think we're doing a great job. They appreciate the work that we're doing, and we thank them for their support and all the things that we've asked them for, they've produced for us, and let's keep this going. Things are doing well, and I want it just to, let's ride it as long as we can, because I think the town of Rockland is on the way up. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Okay, so for, for once in a long time, I don't have any comments. It wasn't Mr. Mullen this time that stole my thunder, it was Ms. Nyman and Mr. Penny. I was going to congratulate the Rockland football team, who has actually won 12 straight games now dating back to last year.
Dating back to after a 0-5 start, yep.
Yep. So hopefully that keeps going. We do have an executive session, so I won't go any further with any additional comments. But I want to entertain a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of litigation strategy, Chaka versus Town of Rockland.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion and a second, not to reconvene.
You have a second?
Yeah, I got a second. Okay. Roll call. Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Penny?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
And myself. Thank you very much.